Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. If you would all please rise, and if I could get the Boy Scouts from Troop 518 up front. Right up here, guys.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hang on, guys. We'll let you introduce yourselves quick. Believe you guys are all here earning a merit badge of some sort, right?
Citizenship in the community.
Give us your names.
I'm William Cleaven, I'm a Life Scout.
I'm Aiden Hofstadt, and I'm a Scout.
Hofstadt, I've heard that name before.
I'm Blake Johnson, and I'm a Life Scout.
I'm Logan Johnson, and I'm a Life Scout.
I'm Max Walls, and I'm a Life Scout.
I'm Jacob Balma, I'm a Life Scout.
I'm Kevin, I'm Kevin Hagman, and I'm a Scout.
I'm Riley Carr, and I'm a Star.
I'm Matt Johnson, I'm the Scout Master.
I'm Leonard Model, and I'm a Life Scout, I mean not Life Scout, First Class.
I'm Caleb Hammond, I'm a First Class.
I'm Charlie Evans-Steiner, I'm a First, I'm First Class.
All right, well, thanks for leading us to the pledge. Thanks for what you do for the community, and thanks for coming out. All right, please call the rule.
Councilmember Grischovia.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the first thing we have on our agenda this evening is to get Fire Chief Piper up to the mic, I will bet.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, councilmembers, citizens. As Fire Chief, I'd like to take the opportunity this evening to introduce you to our newest career firefighter. The Fire Department takes great pride in the service we provide to the citizens of Coon Rapids. Our mission statement states that our mission is to provide efficient services designed to protect lives and property from the adverse effects of fires, medical emergencies, or exposures to dangerous conditions. We pursue this mission with determination and resolve, with emphasis on dedication, compassion, and constant improvement. To accomplish this mission, we need trained, dedicated, and compassionate personnel. With that, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce you to Corey Beck. Corey is a lifelong resident of Coon Rapids. His education includes firefighter 1, firefighter 2, emergency medical technician, hazardous materials technician, and a degree in elementary education from Bethel University. Corey's been married to Nicole since 2014. Since then, their family has grown to include two boys of the ages of 2 and 9 months. Corey has been working as a Senior Business Systems Analyst with American Prize Financial, along with being a paid-on-call firefighter in Coon Rapids for three and a half years. Corey, you've been chosen and trained to be a firefighter for this organization. In addition to responding to emergencies, your duties are many. As a firefighter, you're responsible to maintain your knowledge, skills, and physical abilities. You're responsible to provide quality service to our customers. It will be your duty to respond whenever called. Your chiefs, your crew, and the community rely on your abilities and professionalism in your, in the performance of your role as firefighter. I know you'll provide many years of excellent service to our city, the community you've always called home. That said, we will now have the formal pinning of Corey's badge number 78, followed by him swearing an oath of office performed by Mayor Jerry Cook. So I would like to introduce you to Corey's father, Kirby Beck, a retired Coon Rapids Police Officer of 28 years, as a person he selected to pin on his badge.
So I'm gonna hold this like this for you, while you put up your right hand, and because I don't, I don't know how, well, you will do, I have to write this in the small words. I, Corey Beck, do solemnly swear.
I, Corey Beck, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
Will support the policies and procedures.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Honorably.
Honorably.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Protect the safety and lives.
Protect the safety and lives.
Of my fellow firefighters.
Of my fellow firefighters.
And citizens.
And citizens.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
So help me God. Oh, those are always fun. And there they go. See how well the scouts are hanging in here? They're not going anywhere. All right, next on our agenda is Change to Chill Week proclamation. And, let's see, Change to Chill is a free online teen mental well-being program focused on helping teens identify areas of stress in their lives and build the skills and coping strategies to effectively manage stress. Is somebody here from Alina this evening? Yes, you are. All right, so then, would you like to come up and I'll do this proclamation, or do you, how would you like me to do this, or would you like me to just read it from here?
You can read from there, and then we'll, let's take a picture, get a nice banner to put up.
Oh, you have a banner and everything, wow.
Coon Rapids High School with us as well.
Oh, all right, well, very nice. Then actually, why don't you come up front, and I'll meet you right up in front of the, You have somebody from, oh, you're the one from Coon Rapids High School?
Yes.
All right.
Change to Chill intern over the summer with us, and also is a senior, gonna be a senior at the high school, Coon Rapids.
Okay, all right. So what's your name?
I'm Nick Terbezah.
And you are?
Susan Nygaard with Alina Health.
Okay, excellent. So I will read the proclamation, and then you can show us what the banner is, I'll bet. All right. Whereas, according to the American Psychological Association, teens are under pressure and reporting comparable stress levels and symptoms of stress as adults. And, whereas, stress is linked to symptoms of depression and anxiety, which lead to a host of other psychological and physical issues. And, whereas, according to Minnesota Student Survey data, teens across the state are reporting increasing levels of anxiety and depression. And, whereas, Alina Health's Change to Chill program was created in response to 2013 and 2016 Community Health Needs Assessment data, which indicated a need for teen-specific mental well-being programming and resources. And, whereas, Change to Chill provides activities, lessons, and resources for teens, parents, and educators aimed at building resiliency through mindfulness, meditation, guided imagery, and gratitude practice. And, whereas, the Change to Chill School Partnership, a component of the Change to Chill program, was awarded to Coon Rapids High School during the 2018-2019 school year to provide customized mental well-being programming for the Coon Rapids community. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim the week of September 10th through September 14th, 2018, to be Change to Chill Week in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 21st day of August 2018. All right, is there anything you'd like to follow us about that program?
Thank you, yes. Like I said, I come from Alina Health. Craig Malm, I know is one of your good colleagues, met with you earlier today, not able to be with us this evening. But Change to Chill is a free online resource, and so all schools are able to access what we've created, just through the changetochill.org. However, we had schools throughout our service area of Alina Health apply and be awarded the school partnership. And so there are only nine schools, and Coon Rapids High School is one of them. And then we selected teenagers from across the different schools to partner with us this summer, and Nick is one of the interns that we've worked with over the summer to develop more content for the website. So we're happy to launch it. And Chill Week is, as you said, September 10th through 14th. We're gonna have a variety of different activities at the school. Mindful Monday, Tech Free Tuesday, Wellness Wednesday, Thankful Thursday, and Fun Friday. And a variety of activities for the students that week as well. So this banner will be going to the school. Unfortunately, Nick was the only school rep able to make it this evening, but we'll certainly get it to them, as well as other contributions.
It's still summer, you know. So it's a banner for the school, is it?
Banner for the school, yeah. So...
Well, this looks really big. Do we really wanna unroll this?
We do, it's good for the...
All right, okay.
So if we can have the council member stand behind, and then if we could do, a few of us. There we go.
Here? You want to back up, well, we better be here, 'cause we're...
So, now if you can tell us if we're straight and tall, and do that thing. I think we'll put the mirror in the middle, I don't need to be in the middle too soon. There we go. Excellent. All right, if you've got one side.
You're fine. Just squat down a little bit. You're good there. All right, you got it. Good job.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the proclamation, too.
The proclamation is over here. So, here.
We'll get that to the school as well.
All right, I think we're through all the fun stuff now. All right, next on our agenda then is to approve the minutes of the August 8th meeting. Motion by Grischoviac, second by Demmer. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
All abstain.
The motion passes, one abstention, Councilmember Johnson. Get this back on again, all right. And we're on to the consent agenda. The first item on our consent agenda is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to Coon Rapids North Star Lions for a military softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. Steven Wells, I love just how that whole full Steven Wells flows. On behalf of Coon Rapids North Star Lions, has applied for a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to be used at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1008 Northdale Boulevard, on September 7th, 8th, and 9th, 2018. The appropriate fees have been paid, the certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, the background investigation is being completed by the Police Department, and the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 9:00 a.m. to midnight from September 7th through September 9th. So we will be approving a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for the Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, at the address, September 7th, 8th, and 9th, contingent upon a successful background investigation.
Nothing holding that background investigation up, is it?
This is not his first time this year through that, so I think it must be okay.
Lots happened in July and now.
Second item on our consent agenda this evening is to receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. City Code requires a semi-annual accounting of gambling expenditures which directly benefit Coon Rapids and cities within the trade area from the organizations licensed by the State Gambling Control Board. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1st through June 30th, showing gambling expenditures within the City of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 14 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $601,248.99, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes City of Coon Rapids, reported at $606,986.82. And the reported combined expenditures specifically within the City of Coon Rapids was $573,934.82. So with this, we'll be receiving the gambling expenditure report for the first half of The third item on our consent agenda, and item number six on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 18-90 authorizing donation of playground equipment. Staff is looking for authorization to donate playground equipment being replaced at Marshland Park to Kids Around the World, a nonprofit organization. Playground equipment is being replaced at Marshland Park. Staff is requesting authorization to donate the old equipment to the nonprofit Kids Around the World, I guess I could've just read that once. This organization renovates used park equipment and reinstalls it in underprivileged areas around the world, and the city has made donation to kids in the past. So we'll be looking to approve Resolution 18-90, authorizing a donation of used playground equipment to Kids Around the World Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, and B, approve the agreement with Kids Around the World Incorporated for playground equipment removal, and authorize the execution of the agreement by appropriate city officials. Item number seven on our consent agenda, around this evening's agenda, so fourth on the consent, approve temporary on-sale liquor license for strong beer and wine to VFW Post 9625 for their law enforcement appreciation event. The appropriate fees have been paid, the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been obtained, and Jason Clinton's background investigation is being completed by the Police Department. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 9:00 a.m. to midnight on September 15th, 2018. So with this, we will be approving a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids VFW Post 9625 for use at the law enforcement appreciation event to be located at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard on September 15th, 2018, contingent upon a successful background investigation. Item number eight on this evening's agenda, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to approve the final payment for Project 17-10, Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension Trail Forest Lake Contracting. There were a few changes for a saw cut and removal of the two minutes surface and concrete curb and overlay, furnish and install a safety apron and drainage inlet, as well as providing topsoil and flagging area. And the actual project costs were more than the final contract amount due to more work performed than the actual bid. So with this, we'll be approving change orders and final payments to Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $5,659.41 for Project 17-10, Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension Trail.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move approval and adoption of all the items on the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? Mayor? Councilmember Grischoviac?
I just have a question regarding number eight, the final payment for the Project 17-10. I understand the contract amount and the additions, but how is it that we wind up with more costs than what those agreed-upon additions were? Are those change orders, or are those pieces of work that the contractor just saw fit to perform?
Councilmember Grischoviac, members of the council. Portion of that is due to the change order, because, because of the extra saw cutting and things that weren't originally in the contract, there's extra pavement. That was already a bid item, so while it is a change to the contract, there was a, there was a number for it. Whereas the traffic control, the curbing, those were new items that were added. So this often happens with contracts, sometimes you're over for pavement, you're under for retaining walls, so the quantities, you know, maybe it's not 1,800 ton, it turns out to be 1,900 ton instead. So part of it is due to the change order, just with adjustment of already bid quantity items.
Okay, I was just noticing that the, the change order was actually in excess of the additions to the contract, so I just wanted to get a gauge on how that occurred.
Yeah, we had to, we had to remove pavement, so that meant we had to put more pavement back in its place. Those were already bid numbers we had, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And the consent agenda is approved and adopted. We have one item under Old Business, and that's to consider Planning Case 18-12, consider adoption of Ordinance 2210, approving a zone change to low-density residential 2, 2060, 125th Lane. Rob Palno. This was introduced at the last meeting, and does council need to relook at any of this, or any questions on this? This is that parcel right on Main Street, just west of Shenandoah Boulevard, second lot in. Mayor? Councilmember Grischoviac?
I did have a question on this, and I failed to ask it at the last meeting, but there's two parcels on that corner that are, that are gonna change from moderate density to low density. Right now, there's a single-family home on each, right? So they're actually low-density on moderate density, it must've changed, right? So, and I think it makes sense to do what we're doing here, but why, why not do it at the, at the other corner lot as well? That's gonna be a little oasis of moderate density as well, isn't it?
This will, it'll be an island of median density in a low-density...
I mean, the lot. Sea.
Sea, the sea of low density. I think that was the quote from last meeting.
Yeah. But I was just wondering why, is there a reason why we're not changing both lots to low-density? They're both single-family homes today, they're gonna stay single-family homes.
Separate owners, though, right?
Right, and we're...
Yeah, the other one, the other one isn't, isn't requesting it right now.
Right, but the, I'm just, the whole zone is changing, right? Or we're just...
Just that lot.
Just the lot.
Mr. Lupin, Mr. Brown, Mr. Freenelius, anybody wanna jump in? Mr. Harlicker?
Yeah, so like, like a few councilmembers have said, it is just the one lot that's been requested for the zone change right now. Kinda indicated that going forward, comprehensive plan policies kinda state that we should look at rezoning that, that second lot, just to have kinda consistency in the zoning, as the mayor said, the island and the sea.
No, those were your words.
As the mayor repeated, but as I said at the last meeting, but right now, there's no, there's no proposal to change that zoning, but going forward, that's something we'd wanna look at.
For consistency's purpose and for efficiency's purpose, it just seems like it should be done at the same time, so, yeah.
You don't want, you don't wanna hold the one up to wait for the other, to try to get the other one involved, but, all right.
Comprehensive plans coming up really soon here.
Take care of that. Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
In Planning Case 18-12, move to approve Ordinance 2210, approving the proposed zone change based on the listed findings.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item 10, now we're under New Business, is to consider Resolution 18-88, establishing the 2018-2019 Coon Rapids Ice Center rental rates and approve the fee structure. Kinda looks like everything is pretty moderate changes, or small changes, $5 here and $5 there, and $10 on prime. Everybody, seems competitive with everybody. Anything you wanna add? No? All right, council want anything on this? Councilmember Kicker?
I do have a question, so, I mean, generally, when I look at this, I'm thinking of high school hockey programs and the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, but are, do, do we charge the figure skating the same? Do they just usually rent by the hour as well? Is that how that works?
Councilmember Kicker, that's correct. They're typically the off-prime type hours, but yes, that is, that is true, they pay an hourly rate for ice usage as well.
Isn't there a ton more of the figure skaters than there are hockey players?
There are a significant amount of hours used by the figure skating school, that's true.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Demmer.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 18-88, establishing the 2018-2019 ice rental rates for the Coon Rapids Ice Center, and approve the 2018-2019 Coon Rapids Ice Center fee structure.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider approval of the 2018-2019 Coon Rapids Ice Center user contracts. And now, are we gonna be looking at the Blue Ox contract separately then, in a different meeting, or?
Yes. Also, we anticipate that would come back either, probably at the next meeting, on September 4th.
Okay, yeah, they seemed happy with it now.
Yes.
Good. All right. Anybody have any questions on this, or anybody wanna jump in?
All right.
All right, Councilmember Demmer?
Dedicated mover today. Move to approve the proposed 2018-2019 Coon Rapids Ice Center annual user contracts with Anoka-Hennepin Independent School District Number 11, and Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, and authorize city officials to execute accordingly.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Is there a discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And now we're on item 12, to consider Resolution 18-93 amending once again the golf fund budget. We're looking at a budget amendment in the amount of $5,924 for a rooftop unit with electric heat at Bunker Hills Golf Clubhouse. This will allow the temperature in the area between the golf pro shop and the caterer's office to be better regulated. It is frequently cold in this area of the building, and staff has received many complaints over the years regarding the temperature in the restrooms near the restaurant. The 2018 budget does not include funds for this purchase, and the capital purchases must specifically be identified and funded. Therefore, staff is recommending the budget in the facility construction fund be amended to purchase the rooftop unit. Anybody need to hear from, anybody on this? Need Mr. Anderson to tell you how cold his office is, or anything?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Wells?
Move adoption of Resolution Number 18-93 amending the 2018 golf fund.
I'll second it.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Mayor? Councilmember Grischoviac?
I just kinda have the same question. It seems like we do have quite a few amending the golf funds that are outside of the budget process, being that we're looking at the 2019 budget right now. I would just like to see these things included in our budget. Sounds like we've had this issue for a few years, and here it is as an unbudgeted expenditure, so going forward, like to see those things in the budget. That would be my comment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Go get some heat. Item number 13 is to consider the Golf Tech Bunker Hills lease renewal. The 2013 learning center construction and initial lease term with Golf Tech... Mr. Anderson, are you here to talk about this? I'll just be quiet and let you present.
Well, Mayor, Council, I am, I am. Before you have the Golf Tech Bunker Hills lease renewal, and I have Oliver Darby, Director of Instruction at Golf Tech Bunker Hills with me.
Oh, good.
And we're delighted to be here, of course. You know, they say time flies when you're having fun, and this relationship has been fun, and I believe fantastic, for the City of Coon Rapids and Bunker Hills, and that Golf Tech brings a level of expertise and professionalism to golf instruction, and frankly, beyond at Bunker Hills, it has been just a, a really good thing for the past five years. So we're hoping that we can move forward with another five years and move it forward, so. Kinda yield, Oliver, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah. Thank you, Tim. Mr. Mayor, council members, certainly like to reiterate what Tim was saying in terms of our relationship, it's been absolutely wonderful, and it's a privilege for our organization to be based at Bunker Hills, you know, prestigious historic golf course, and we're hopeful that we can continue on into the future, but, Tim said, last five years have gone by very quickly, and we've had a great time, and we look forward to more into the future.
Prestigious, what was, what else was it?
Historic.
Historic, yeah.
Might have to update the website.
All right, does anybody have any questions on the lease, or anybody wanna do something with it?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a lease renewal with Golf Tech Minnesota GTM and Partners LLC for operation of the golf instruction learning center at Bunker Hills.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer, is there a discussion? This has been, I remember when we built the garage out there, right, from day one, this has just been an awesome addition to the golf course, and, yeah, it's really good. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries, we're good for another five years, huh? Nice. All right, item fourteen, consider a construction cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Council, project seventeen dash twenty-eight. Mr. Hammer, you wanna do this one, or, how many times have you done this one now, do you think?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's been a long time, but this is the actual agreement between the city and the Metropolitan Council, the project is getting kicked off for the city portion of it, we are step one, and then the Metropolitan Council comes in next year and will do their work, so what this does is just outlines our ability to work on their property, their ability to work on our property, there were some extra costs that the city incurred as part of this, and this agreement covers those reimbursements as well as some tree replacement dollars that the forestry department will be able to put to good use in the parks around there, so it just outlines who's doing what and when, there's a little bit of savings to the city because we're doing a little, few extra things that they should be responsible for, and it's included in this agreement, and I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Council, any questions for Mr. Hammer?
Yep.
Councilmember Kicker?
When, when we plan on doing the work on our, you said Coon Rapids does it first?
Yes, councilmember Kicker, the contractors, I believe last week, were gonna mobilize to the site, they're gonna start to set up the bypass pumping just a little south of the intersection, kinda down by the apartment buildings in that area, so part of the Riverwalk area, they're gonna start setting things up down there, and they should be working in earnest this week, I sure hope.
All right, councilmember K, uh, Demmer?
Hi, any residents likely to notice anything during the work, and have they been notified?
Councilmember Demmer, we have not specifically notified an area because it'd be hard to do, what they will notice is some very large piping laying across that old military bridge, and they'll see a lot of activity occurring in and around the manholes, most of the, the work is gonna take place to just refurbish what's there, so there aren't gonna be significant excavations and things, but there will be a few areas and a few trees that will come down, but for the most part, we're trying to do it from the inside out and not have a lot of disturbance, so they'll see vehicles, and they'll see pumping equipment, and they'll hear generators and those things running, and those will be manned twenty-four hours a day.
But there won't be any restrictions like no using the sewer for three hours or anything like that, everyone's okay?
No, that's what the pumping is for in advance, and that's why it's manned twenty-four hours a day.
Okay.
You, suddenly the pumping thing, now I've got a different thought about that one, but.
All right, so.
All right, what do you got there, councilmember Demmer?
Move to accept the attached agreement with Metropolitan Council in the case of project seventeen dash twenty-eight.
Ooh, nice tie-in. Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item fifteen is to consider easement agreements for project seventeen dash seventeen, two thousand seventeen drainage issues, we're looking at approving permanent easement agreements to perform storm sewer drainage improvements at ninety-nine-eleven Olive Street and ninety-nine-eleven Palm Street, Mr. Hammer, do you want me to just kinda hit the highlights here?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll just briefly state that these items were in front of you along with several others, last fall, last summer, last fall, we finally got to a point with the property owners of extending a modest amount of storm sewer into those low-lying areas, it allows other properties the ability to either extend drain tile or grade down to this location, so this is kinda the low point in that whole neighborhood, is it going to take away all the drainage issues in the area? No, it will not, but it, it's the spot where all the water ultimately drains to, and we wanna get ducks out of people's sheds and things like that, so, these are two modest improvements with the same issues in the same neighborhood.
All right.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Uh, you know, I definitely support this, you know, driving by those houses, they, they have a lot more lakefront property than they, they bargained for, I was reading through the agenda, and it, in, in this item, it said something about, in addition to the attached easement agreements that account for access and future maintenance, accompanying documents allow for neighboring upstream properties to perform grading within their lots and the easement area to better direct runoff to the new storm sewer inlets. I couldn't find anything that said that was the case, but I assume what you mean is, we're putting this thing right on the border, so if someone does any backyard maintenance, it's going to drain, but it caused me to wonder about, I wouldn't normally just be allowed to grade my yard, to shove water into my neighbor's yard, how does that become okay when the agreements are only with the property owner that has the easement? How, how is it okay for the neighbor upstream to, to push water into their neighbor's yard?
Councilmember Demmer, members of the council, that's what's occurring today, all the water flows north to south, it reaches Ninety-Ninth Avenue, which sits about four to five feet higher, so there really is no place for this water to go, so it, it's been draining this direction all along, that comment was that it's not these agreements, there's a completely separate agreement with that property owner that states, look, I understand, I'm the low point, I'm taking most of the water, if from time to time, people wanna come and tap into this line or improve the drainage to this location, I have to agree because I'm getting a benefit out of this, so I have to allow those upstream of me that are already sending this water, if there's a better way for them to improve their situation, it's all ultimately gonna drain down here, so, like I said, it could be a drain tile connection, it could be a sewer extension, it could just be some grading within that rear yard area, what the city didn't wanna get into is chasing this thing and moving fences and power poles, and it, it's a drainage swale today, that's fairly flat in a sandy area, this is a modest improvement that can improve that area, but it puts some of that responsibility on the homeowners as well to make sure that their water does get there.
Okay, so the agreement isn't, the agreement exists, it was made with the owners of those two properties, and, and they were okay with it, so.
Correct, separate agreements that aren't attached.
Yeah, I just couldn't find that language in what was attached, so I just wanted to make sure it got covered somewhere, so, all right, thank you.
Your honor. Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move acceptance of the permanent easements described in the agenda item and authorize the execution of the agreements between the city and landowners of the affected properties, do you need an additional part of that motion to authorize that the cost be paid out of the Stormwater Utility Fund? Okay, and so also, as a part of that motion, that the project cost estimated at forty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to be paid for from the miscellaneous drainage improvement funds contained within the Stormwater Utility Fund, six forty.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item sixteen, kinda related to item nine, is to consider, under planning case eighteen dash eleven, consider resolution eighteen dash eighty-nine, a land use change from moderate-density residential to low-density residential, twenty-sixty, one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth lane, Rob Polno, Coon Rapids, it's the same lot that we looked at earlier, now the land use has to match the zoning, so that's what we're looking at right now, correct? Councilmember Demmer?
Uh, your honor, in planning case eighteen dash eleven, move that the city council adopt the attached resolution approving the proposed land use amendment based on the listed findings.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler, is there any discussion on this? Mayor? Councilmember Guskowiak?
Same concern, it just seems like we should be doing this with a lot closer to Shenandoah at the same time.
Okay, noted.
Dude, noted.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item number seventeen, this is definitely a Mr. Hammer thing, consider proposal and letters of engagement for engineering services, two thousand nineteen well rehabilitation program, project number nineteen dash seven, is there anything left to say on this project, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, it's our annual maintenance program, the only thing to say is, it's in the two thousand nineteen budget, so you haven't officially approved these funds yet, but the sooner we start, the faster the wells get put back into production, and then we're not having potentially wells out in the middle of the prime pumping season, so, this gives us a head start.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal for engineering services for the two thousand nineteen well rehabilitation program from Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated, and authorize execution of the letter of engagement in accordance with the proposed, proposal dated August ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker, is there a discussion?
Mayor, can I just ask one question?
Of course.
You can ask two if you had two.
Councilmember Guskowiak?
May have two, no. In the two thousand nineteen budget, will the specific wells be pointed out of which ones are being rehabilitated?
Councilmember Guskowiak, those are already included in the budget book.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item number eighteen is to consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for Pleasure Creek Culvert Extension, project eighteen dash eighteen, you found a new plan, instead of replacing that rotted-out bridge, you're just going to extend the culvert and put grading over the top of that, kinda that deal?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, it keeps the cost down, Anoka County's interested in participating, so we're gonna share in the cost and the responsibilities for this project, it eliminates one piece of infrastructure that would continue to be a problem going forward, so by doing this, we created a larger boulevard, we're working with the Jason property owners on the maintenance responsibilities, access, proceeding full speed ahead.
All right.
Hi, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So I assume that you're gonna have some sort of guardrail of some sort there, the problem with the bridge seemed to be that it was a lot of salt getting on the bridge and rusting it out, is there plans in place to make sure that the guardrail doesn't become a, a problem?
Councilmember Demmer, we will not have a guardrail, we'll have a fence, a larger chain-link fence, but it's gonna be a considerable distance away, it's probably gonna be five, eight, probably fifteen feet plus off the edge of the roadway, so yes.
Okay.
No guardrails.
Your honor. Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the council approve the execution of the joint powers agreement, JPA, with the Anoka County, with Anoka County for improvements to the existing culvert on Pleasure Creek at Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Second. Motion by Kicker, second by Guskowiak, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. I hope so. Agenda item nineteen is to consider a sub-grantee agreement with Riverdale Station Apartments. In March two thousand eighteen, Sherman Associates acquired approximately eight acres of a sixteen-acre vacant site next to the Riverdale Transit Station along North Del Boulevard from the Anoka County Regional Railroad Authority, Sherman proposes a two hundred fifty-one-unit mixed-income apartment project and a small commercial building on the site, closing on the financing for this project is expected by the end of August, and construction will begin shortly thereafter, the project will utilize multiple sources of funding, including a nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollar livable, livable communities transit-oriented development grant from the Metropolitan Council, the city was awarded this grant in two thousand sixteen and will provide it to the developer to assist with certain site improvements, the council is asked to approve the sub-grantee agreement to formalize this arrangement, and while the council approved a form of this agreement in June, the developer has requested some changes to the document since that time, the changes do not affect the business or financial terms of the agreement, but clarify some of the legal provisions. So in here, it says that the, they purchased this from the Anoka County Regional Railroad Authority, they're actually purchasing this from us, right? Correct? Yeah, okay. Council, any questions, or somebody wanna make a motion?
Hi, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to approve the sub-grantee agreement with Sherman Associates.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item twenty is to consider resolution eighteen dash ninety-one, authorizing assignment of the city's CDBG rehab loan portfolio to the Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, so this is just sort of the paperwork finishing what we started before. In April of this year, the city turned over administration of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program to Anoka County, part of this transfer was to include assignment of the city's existing portfolio of housing rehab loans that were made with CDBG funds, staff has since been informed by the county that the agreement did not adequately transfer all administrative functions, and most recently, an issue arose when the county tried to record a satisfaction of mortgage for a loan that had been paid off, county staff has determined that the easiest solution is for the city to adopt the attached resolution formally assigning the housing rehab loan portfolio to the Anoka County HRA, is that everything?
That is everything, Mr. Mayor.
You do a great job just bringing this stuff along.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution eighteen dash ninety-one, authorizing assignment of the city's CDBG rehab loan portfolio to the Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson, is there a discussion?
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So if someone wants to take part in this program, do they contact the city or the county?
Councilmember Demmer, they contact Anoka County, they're now responsible for administering this loan program.
Is it possible that, I think we used to have a link on the website back when we controlled it, can we just make sure that that link sends them to the right place on the county webpage?
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmember Guskowiak?
I have a related question, is this assignment irrevocable? The reason I ask that is, prior councils had basically the city as the administrator, even though we kinda outsourced it, if we ever wanted to go back to that model, is it completely up to the county now, or is that something that we could lobby for in the event we wanted to do that again?
Uh, councilmember Guskowiak, when we had the discussion with Anoka County, the decision to kind of opt out or return the program back to Anoka County was really for the next, I think, three years, so, once we get through the next three years, we can then revisit the idea of, do we wanna take the program back, and, so we'd have an opportunity to do that, so this really relates to the current memorandum of understanding that we have for the existing program funds that we were allocated.
That does clarify, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. We are up to the open-mic public comment portion of the meeting, is anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? Anybody here for open mic? All right, close that portion, we don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Okay, it's quiet, I'm just gonna ask one question, we have a little bit of time yet, but Mr. Hammer, you were given some news on the Hanson Boulevard project, and the, for their plan for over the winter, is that still the plan as far as we know, to be open?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Hanson Boulevard will be open, two lanes each direction through the winter.
Paved.
As far as I know.
Paved.
Paved condition. I can tell you one thing, councilmember Johnson, that if the county's clearing snow off the road, it'll be paved.
Still got that bad, that foley thing, huh?
The foley thing sticks in my craw.
All right, other business, Mr. Stemmodle?
Mayor Council, it's a little bit ahead of time, but we do have a couple of fun events coming up in September, they may as well start advertising, one of them being movie in the park on September fifteenth at Sand Creek Athletic Complex, that'll be in about seven-thirty, and that movie will be Paddington Two, and then also the Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair, which is September twenty-second from ten to two PM at the Riverview Park, which has continued to grow over the years, and I think has become a pretty fun annual fall event, so you bring your pet out there, a lot of vendors, you know, different types of celebrations, that sort of thing.
They have a qualifier on there, you're well-behaved.
Well-behaved pet, yes, good point.
Oh, I, I got a comment from a resident the other day, when we had our meeting in the park at Marshland Park, somebody mentioned a concern with dogs being off-leash and dogs being picked up after, and she said a sign was added right away, and she said-